Ladies and gentlemen, before we call the meeting to order this evening, I'd like to invite David Slatterup from Grace First Presbyterian Church. David's going to lead us, like he commonly does and often in the invocation. Thank you for being here on this chilly night, sir.
It is chilly. That's what I have at home waiting for me. Let us pray. Grace, God, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the cold weather, even though we are cold, but we understand that it is part of the seasons that you created. Lord, we just pray that you would give wisdom to decisions that need to be made this evening. We pray for those who are out in the weather, and we pray that you would give them comfort, that you would have them find shelter this evening as well. Lord, just be with all of those who continue to serve you as first responders. And Lord, we just pray safety around them. And God, we just lift up our nation to you, and we just pray for the decisions that need to be made. We pray that they would all be decisions that are in accordance to your will. We ask these things in Christ's name. Amen.
Thank you again for being here, sir. It's 6:30 PM, and I'll call the meeting to order, and that's item two on our agenda. We do have a quorum present. All council members are here this evening. Item three on the agenda is pledges of allegiance to the United States and Texas flags, and Councilman Cleveland has willingly volunteered to lead us in those two items.
Please stand and join me for place the U.S. and then the Texas flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you for that, sir. Item four on the agenda is items of community interest. Mr. Hothop, anything this evening?
I have none tonight.
Counsel.
I just want to say I enjoyed the Jack-o'-lantern Knights event that our Parks and Rec folks put on. It was a phenomenal event, and they did a very nice pumpkin presentation of our council. So if you have not had a chance to see that, make sure you see it on the way out. But great job on that event to our Parks and Rec.
Nice touch. It was great. Any other things? That was great, Mr. Tiscus. Thank you. Anybody else? Item five is presentations and proclamations. We're going to have four of these. I'm going to read off the first three, and then council will move forward together. Five A is a presentation of award from the Weatherford Horseshoe Club to the Weatherford Parks and Recreation and Special Events Department. John Allison's going to do that for us. Five B, presentation from Weatherford Christian School and gratitude for the prayer for Weatherford Day, proclamation issued in August of 2020. And five C is proclaiming proclamation naming November 6, 2020 as Arbor Day in the city of Weatherford. And counsel, I stand corrected. Mr. Allison, you're going to come forward and make the presentation on five A, and then the other ones will come down forward for, if that's okay, sir.
Who ready or...?
Excuse me?
I'm sorry.
Please come forward, and I believe Mr. Kirkpatrick's going to join you at the podium for that presentation.
Can I take this off?
Absolutely, sir. Mr. Kirkpatrick, did I do that correct, sir?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, counsel. Thank you, mayor, for allowing the Weatherford Horseshoe Club to make a very important presentation and brag on one of your departments. This little event started years ago. June 30, 2016 was when the pits were dedicated. And tonight, we have Mike Rotten is here. He's one of the original members. There were four of us that started, and we're up to 20 now that pitch on a regular basis. But the reason we're here tonight is Mr. Kirkpatrick and the Parks Department, they have been phenomenal in their assistance to helping us do this pitching horseshoes. One of the things that we talked about was having lights. And so Shannon Goodman said, "John, I'll get you lights." Well, if you've been by the park, you can see the poles are up. We're hoping about the next two or three weeks, all the equipment will finally be in. We'll have those and can pitch after dark. A lot of our guys work, and by the time they get there, you know, we're going to pitch a couple of games. But the thing that's kind of unique about our club, the Lions Club helped pay for the park. That's why it's called New Lions Ringer Alley. And this year, we hosted the Second Annual Texas High School State Horseshoe Tournament. And we're excited that we're trying to get another event into schools where kids can have a lifetime fun of pitching horseshoes. We've also hosted regular tournaments through the Texas Horseshoe Pitching Association. And Saturday, we're going to have the Halloween special. And that'll be the last tournament in the state of Texas this year. And so we're kind of excited. The winner gets a cornhole set. We have three brackets, so we have three of those, and one of our members makes those in town. So we're excited about that. But what's really good is the Parks Department with Shannon, Jacob, David Moat, Michelle, or Michael Howard, Rachel Hamilton, and Gary Miller. They've been instrumental in helping us to conduct these tournaments. And it's important because there's other clubs, like Little Elm. Their city council put a charge on parking their car in the park. That club dissolved. But this group of gentlemen and ladies has helped us just really have a tremendous club. And so the Weatherford Horseshoe Pitching Club recognizes and appreciates the Weatherford Parks Recreation Department members, of whom I've named, for their outstanding and continual support and assistance for 2020. So, Mr. Jacob, thank you for your Parks Department. We appreciate it. And city council, you've got a great group of people that's working in that department.
I want to tell you something about John Allison. He's a great guy. We're fellow Lions. But if he ever gets you out throwing horseshoes, don't bet a lunch on it or anything else, because he'll take you to the ringer. JA, thanks for being here. We appreciate your compliment of that great department.
Thank you.
And counsel, if you'd join me down at the front for five B and five C please. All right, at this time, I'm going to have the great folks from Weatherford Christian School. Please come forward. Courtney McCallum's with us and her leadership team or their crew. And Courtney, can I give you the microphone and you kind of let us know what you're doing tonight?
Wait a minute. Dr. Riley.
Dr. Riley, I apologize.
No problem. No problem.
Come on up here. Everybody can see you.
I want to thank the committee to for our day of prayer that you established for the support of Weatherford and our school. And the t-shirts that you're going to receive, they are a token of our appreciation for the support that you have for this community, and it represents is for, for the community. And I thank you for each of your work in that, on that behalf. Thank you. Thank you. We appreciate you.
Thank you so much for being here. We appreciate it, and just to return the gift and the favor, and we're thankful for our partnership with Weatherford Christian School. And we also look forward to your boys' baseball team being back. They committed to another state championship, if y'all remember that. But Mayor Pro Tim Wilder has a presentation for y'all, a little gift basket from the city of Weatherford to Weatherford Christian School. We value the partnership, and we look forward to seeing you back here very soon. Thank you so much. Round of applause for Weatherford Christian School. Item five C again is proclaiming November the 6th of 2020 as Arbor Day in the city of Weatherford. We're going to do a presentation of a proclamation at this time. Excuse me for that. Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed at the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for planting of trees. And whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. And whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce life-giving oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. And whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community. And whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now therefore, I, Paul Pascal, the mayor of the great city of Weatherford, Texas, do hereby proclaim November the 6th, 2020, as Arbor Day in the city of Weatherford, Texas. And I urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands for the future for all citizens of our country and world. Thank you so much. All right, counsel, we'll move back to the dice. Five D on the agenda is strong community employee highlight video. Blake Rexro.
Mayor, members of council, Blake Rexro, Director of Communications and Marketing. I come before you once again. I think we've done so many, I've lost count. This might be video number six or seven. But we have another employee highlight video. And the purpose of these videos is to not only show you all as our elected body, but our citizens of who we are as an organization here within the city of Weatherford. Today, we're featuring Rachel Hamilton, who works in our Parks Department. And she was mentioned earlier in tonight's meeting. And so this is Rachel Hamilton. Without further ado.
Last time I counted, we had like 35 special events. Was it fun? How I got started? Okay. My name is Rachel Hamilton. I am a special event coordinator for the city of Weatherford, Parks Recreation, and Special Events Department. I have worked in the city since January 2015. I started as a first Monday assistant and then became first Monday coordinator and then into special event coordinator. And now I get to do all the fun stuff that I went to school for. So graphic design I do and social media marketing I do for all of our events and pretty much everything that we have going on. I have a wonderful family. I have a two-and-a-half-year-old, and she is fun and vivacious. My husband is awesome. His name is Leo. I really enjoy working for the city. I kind of think of everybody here as extended family. I have not met a person that I didn't absolutely love here. I feel like we're a really tight community, and we just love serving everybody in our community. I am Weatherford.
Rachel is great.
Yes, sir. She's fantastic, and I think this is a great example of how she started out with the city and has worked her way to the position that she's in. And she's what makes us a strong community of who we are. So thank you.
Thanks for that. Great video.
Thank you.
Item six on the agenda, counsel, is consent agenda items. We have six A, B, C, and D, counsel. Could we entertain those as a group, or would you like to split one off individually? Have a motion for approval by Jeff Robinson for the entire body. Second by Kevin Cleveland. Any discussion on the items before we consider the whole pool? Hearing none, we'll vote on consent agenda items at this time. Indicate yea or nay, please. Agenda items pass five zero. Item seven is public hearings. Seven A is hold a public hearing and consider adoption of ordinance O-2020-60 for conditional use permit for feed and grain store, farm supply store, at the lot located at the northwest quadrant of FM 730 Azale Highway and FM 180 Fort Worth Highway, being an 18.45 acre tract of land situated in the Hannibal Good survey abstract number 535, city of Weatherford, Parker County, Texas, CUP 2020-0011. Good evening.
Yes, mayor and counsel, you have before you this request for this location for this conditional use permit for a feed and grain store. And I think they have a lot of other sundries that they provide at their facilities. This went before the Planning and Zoning Commission at their October 14th meeting and was unanimously approved with the conditions outlined in the staff report that's in your packet. There were five items, conditions placed on this conditional use permit. And that was, again, recommended by staff and unanimously by the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Any questions for Mr. Kettner? We do have to have a public hearing, but any questions for him before we have the hearing?
I do have one.
Mayor Pro Tim.
And this is really for all public hearings. But especially on this one, we have quite a few caveats to this conditional use permit request. I'm wondering how we know that the caveats are actually instituted in a timely manner?
Okay. One thing that we are doing differently in Weatherford that we haven't done in the past is when a project is completed like this, this is a new facility that will be built. And when we go out, at this time, we send out not only a building inspectors to do the final, but we also send out other staff. A planner will go out and check the facility as well to ensure that the conditions that have been placed on it are in place. And we follow up with those shortly after they're opened and operating to ensure that those conditions are still being followed.
Great question. Any others before we have a public hearing? All right. Thank you, Mr. Kettner. This time, we'll have a public hearing on item seven A specifically. We do have a speaker card, and after that, we'll open up the floor for anybody from the audience. Mr. Kim Weins. Kim? Hope I pronounced that correctly, sir. Once you get settled, if you can let us have your name and address, and then we'll give you three minutes to speak.
My name is Kim Weens. You're close.
Weens. I apologize.
3800 Steeplechase Court in Midlothian, just down the 287 from us here. I represent Atwood's Ranch and Home. And I don't know if some of you have been to an Atwood's. You know, it's, they call it a feed and grain store. That's about this much of our business. If you haven't been to an Atwood's, it's a big general store. We got a hunting and camping, outdoor section, western wear section, home goods for moms and grandmas to check out, toy section for kids, and garden center, things like that. Like I say, we like to call it a big general store. We've been working hard to get into the Parker County area here, find the right site. And we've had the pleasure of working with Mr. Wayne Lee, the owner of the property, and your staff. Your staff has been wonderful to work with. And I say that honestly, as I do their stuff, Atwood's stuff all over the state. I do want to commend your staff for being very, you know, they give us the rules, but they work with us. And it's a pleasure doing business with, with staff that work together to accomplish a common goal. So we're excited about being here. Would appreciate your support tonight. If you have any questions for me, happy to answer that. But I just wanted to thank you again for the opportunity tonight.
Any questions for Mr. Weens?
I would like to say thanks for that feedback from our staff, because that's not always the feedback that we've received in the past. But Mr. Kettner and his team have been working very diligently to address that. And that's the kind of feedback we like to hear. So thanks for sharing that.
And that, and that really is genuine. I'm not saying that to try to get support or drum that up. But one of the first things that we do when we go out and look at a site, one of my first due diligence items is go and talk with the city and see, are they, are they pro-growth? Are they willing to work with us? And that, because we can choose a lot of different places to go, but you guys are headed in a great direction. I'm excited to be a part of that.
Thank you.
Again, thank you.
Mr. Weens, quick question for you, Lee. Are you fully aware of all the conditions in the proposed item? And are you, you understand those completely?
Well, are they on the...?
Yes, sir.
Okay, yeah. No, I think, I think we are. And again, I will relay that to, to the Atwood's team. I think they've been in contact with...
The understanding that they will be fully complied with, no exceptions.
Yeah, and they're, they like to come in with their, they do in-house construction with one of their preferred developers. And when they go, they, they don't try to piecemeal things. I understand that, you know, that sometimes that may happen where, you know, well, I'll get to it. I'll get to it. And with, with some of the smaller companies, but no, we've got 71 stores across a five-state area.
Great.
Our guys know what they're doing, and, and we wouldn't be where we are without doing it right.
Let's make number 72 the best. How's that sound?
Okay. That's good.
Any other questions for Mr. Weens? Sir, thank you for being here. Appreciate it. Was this a public hearing on item seven A? Is there anybody from Florida that'd like to speak specifically on this item? If so, please come forward at this time. Good evening. How are you today? If you can identify yourself, name and address, then you'll have three minutes.
I'm Wayne Lee.
Good evening, Mr. Lee.
I have office, of course, here in 560, or excuse me, 1951 Fort Worth Highway. Mr. Mayor, council, most of you know, been developing here in South, in Parker County, I guess, 42 years, and my family's been here since 1890. And I've been working on this site actually for about 23 years. And many times I've wondered why it didn't ever quite gel. And now I know, because I'm really happy to bring a company and a store like Atwood's, because they look like Weatherford. I always like to say, you know, people over in Fort Worth think the West begins in Fort Worth. Well, I say, no, it really begins in Weatherford. We're, we're...
The West or the best? The best?
Yeah.
Okay.
The West. Well, the best and the West.
That's what I thought you said. Just making sure, yeah.
Best and the West. And I really believe Atwood's is, is the best in the West, by the way. And you're going to be really pleased, and I think we're all going to be pleased to have an addition like them to our city. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer.
Thanks for being here. Any questions for Mr. Lee? Appreciate your willingness to come forward, sir. Thank you. Anybody else for seven A? Public hearing? At this time, we will close the public hearing on item seven A, counsel. Any discussion on seven A or questions for staff? Hearing done, I see a mayor, excuse me, a motion for approval as presented with conditions?
Yes.
By Mayor Pro Tim Wilder, seconded by Jeff Robinson. Any discussion before we call for a vote? Hearing done, we'll call for a vote at this time on seven A. Indicate yea or nay, please, for seven A at this time. It is approved five zero with conditions as presented on the agenda. Seven B is hold a public hearing and consider adoption of ordinance zero, excuse me, O-2020-59, amending Title XI subdivision regulations for the city of Weatherford and its extraterritorial jurisdiction ETJ MCA 2020-0008. Welcome back, Mr. Kettner.
Yes. As we've discussed in the past with the adoption of the subdivision regulations less than a year ago now, we're coming back every few months to ensure that we're on the right track and moving forward. And this, these changes that we initially did in January 2020, and we updated again in March of 2020. We also have updated the zoning regulations. And part of the zoning regulations, we want to make sure that both our regulations don't have any conflicts between the two. And so we've modified the subdivision regulations, number one, to handle the corner lot situations that we created with the new zoning districts in our residential areas, as outlined in the staff report. We also addressed some modifications and alterations to the, the comments that are required for subdivision flats, because that was one of the concerns from the planning commission, is how many comments are too many for us to even follow up through and to ensure that things are going forward when we disapprove or recommend disapproval from the staff side of things. So we've limited that to 10 of those items. Or if there's something that is significant to the zoning or other regulations that would be strictly contradictory, we're addressing that as well. So that outlines the major changes that you've seen in there. And you had the packet that has all of those changes highlighted with those changes if you have any questions regarding those. This did go before the Planning and Zoning Commission at their October 14th meeting and was unanimously recommended for approval. And this, this is staff's recommendation as well as approval of these subdivision regulations. And if you have any questions, be glad to answer any.
Any questions for Mr. Kettner before we have a public hearing? Thank you, sir. Hearing no questions, we'll open the public hearing on item seven B specifically at this time. If you have a comment on item seven B, please come forward at this time. Seven B. Hearing none and seeing none, we'll close the public hearing at this time. Counsel, any questions or comments before we call for a motion? Hearing none, we'll call for a motion. Councilman Cleveland. I made a motion for approval, seconded by Matt Tiscus. Any discussion before we call for a vote on seven B? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote at this time. Seven B. Please indicate yea or nay. Passes five zero. Item eight on the agenda is regular agenda items. Eight A, consider acceptance of the fiscal year 20, fourth quarter investment report for quarter ended September 30th, 2020. Don Brooks, good evening.
Good evening, mayor, members of the council. I'm Don Brooks, Assistant Finance Director. Tonight, I'd like to give you just a brief summary of the fourth quarter and fiscal year-end investment report included in your packets. Sorry. Sorry about that. City ended the fiscal year with a total of 98.7 million in cash and investments. This is a decrease in the total portfolio of 6.2 million from the third quarter report. The city has earned 308,000 in interest income during the quarter, bringing the fiscal year total to just over 1.8 million dollars. We use the one-year T-bill rate as our benchmark, in which the city's portfolio outperformed that benchmark for the quarter with the portfolio's yield for the fourth quarter at 0.725%, while the one-year T-bill rate was 0.12%. The weighted average maturity at fiscal year-end was 74 days, which is well within the city's maximum of one year. At the completion of the fiscal year, the portfolio's composition consists of 6% bank deposits, 56% investment pools, 29% depository CDs, and 9% US Treasuries and Agencies. The city's cash and investments are in compliance with all requirements of the city's investment policy. We will continue to monitor the market and invest based on the investment priorities of safety, liquidity, diversification, and lastly, yield. Staff is available should you have any questions.
Very good presentation. Any questions, bro? Mayor Pro Tim.
We had a discussion last quarter on the increase in CD investment. And I see that it's 29%. Do you remember by any chance what we've increased that since? And what the percentage?
The investment policy allows us for us to go up to 90%.
Okay.
Any other questions? Appreciate you being here this evening. Thank you so much. See, I believe this, does this require approval?
Motion to accept your report.
Motion for approval by Kevin Cleveland. Is there a second? Second by Matt Tiscus. Any discussion on eight A before we call for a vote? Call for a vote at this time on eight A. Please indicate yea or nay. Passes five zero. Eight B, consider request for final plat approval for Crown Valley Estates, Phase One, Section Three. 53 lots on 12.92 acres situated in the CC McCarver survey, abstract number 1665, city of Weatherford, Parker County, Texas, SBD 2020-0045. Welcome back.
Yes. Mayor, counsel, you have your complete staff report in your packet for this residential final plat. This went before the Planning Commission at their October 14th, 2020 meeting with a recommendation of approval from the planning staff with the five conditions included in your staff report. And the Planning Commission also recommended unanimously to all six present to approve with the five conditions as outlined in your staff report. If you have any questions, be glad to answer any.
Any questions for Mr. Kettner?
Well, yeah. Hold on a minute. We're on eight C, correct?
Sir. No, eight B.
Mine's on the wrong.
Yeah, it's on the wrong screen.
All right. It wasn't matching over my head. I was like, hold on.
That's okay. Were the visual items that we saw correct?
Yes.
Do you want to run back through the verbal parts?
No, no, no. I heard what he was saying. It just wasn't matching.
Yeah, I agree. I agree. Any questions, or do you need to go back over any material? Just a technical deal here.
Okay.
We'll entertain a motion on eight B if it's a council's pleasure.
I'll make a motion.
I'll make a motion that...
Go right ahead. I was just doing it because it wasn't on the screen.
I was just doing it because it wasn't on the screen, right?
We approved the plat with the conditions.
Mr. Robinson followed with a second. Thank you for that, sir. Any discussion on eight B before we move forward with the vote?
Got to be a little quicker, yeah.
Hearing none, we'll call for a vote at this time on eight B. Please indicate yea or nay. Passes five zero with conditions as stated in the agenda. Mr. Cleveland, now we're going to go to eight C, okay? Eight C, consider request for final plat approval for Woodland Lakes, Phase One, nineteen lots and a total of forty-eight point one one acres located between Farm and Market Road nine twenty and Zion Hill Road within the extraterritorial jurisdiction of the City of Weatherford, Parker County, Texas, SBD twenty twenty dash zero zero four four. Welcome back, sir.
Mayor, Council, you have in your packet the complete staff report. This application went before the Planning Commission at their October fourteenth meeting. This application, staff recommended denial of this subdivision plat. It had over nineteen conditions associated with it. And at their October fourteenth, twenty twenty, Regular Planning and Zoning Commission, the commission also voted unanimously with all six present to disapprove the plan for the reasons provided in the staff report of the nineteen conditions.
Questions for Mr. Kettner over eight C, Council? Hearing none, we'll entertain a motion if it's the pleasure.
Motion to deny based on the nineteen listed items.
Motion by Mr. Cleveland for denial based on the nineteen items, a second that concurs by Mr. Robinson. Any discussion on eight C before we call for a vote? The motion is for denial, correct, Mr. Cleveland?
Correct.
Call for a vote at this time on eight C. Indicate yea or nay, please. Motion is denied, five zero. Item nine on the agenda, the staff reports, nine A, update regarding the global recycling market and review of the city's recycling program. Welcome, Mr. Dustin Deal.
Honorable Mayor, councilmembers. Dustin Deal, Director of Municipal Community Services. And today I have with me Dave Yonkey from New Gen Solutions, and he is here to give a brief update over the global recycling markets and how that relates to the City of Weatherford's recycling program. Mr. Yonkey?
Thank you, sir. Well, thank you for coming out to Weatherford this evening. Well, thank you. I will keep this to fifteen minutes or less, so... Whoops, I don't want that. Not going to go over your investment portfolio. Okay. So you heard about me before I did your cost of service study. Important thing, twenty-five years solid waste experience, we're going to talk about some of the volatility in the recycling markets, because that's what happens here. It's kind of like oil and gas. Goes up, it goes down, and goes back up. So the basics, very briefly, I'm going to hit the recycling basics. I'm going to talk about what's going on globally in the last four years. We're going to talk about where your program is. We're going to talk about options that cities do use for recycling collection. We're going to talk about cost effectiveness, recycling versus disposal. We're going to talk about HHW, and then I'm just going to give a handful of recommendations. Bottom line, your program's in really good shape. We're not talking about any type of major changes or anything like that. So just some terminology that you'll hear out in the market sometimes, and I'm just going to define it here for you. Recycling, it's the process by which materials that would otherwise be destined for disposal are collected, separated, processed, and used to manufacture new products. Recycling doesn't, you'll hear about closing the loop. Recycling doesn't work if you don't close the loop. So step one is collection and processing. The, you know, Dustin's folks pick them up, they're hauled to the Republic Murph, where then they're sorted and baled, and they go to a manufacturing site, whether it's paper, plastic for bottles, what have you. And then they turn it into a product, and then you buy that new water bottle, or you buy the carpet for your home that's got the plastic backing from all your plastic bottles. That's one of the major components. That's recycling. You've got to have a closed loop. You'll hear about integrated waste management hierarchy, starting at the top, most preferred to least preferred. So, you know, reduction, again, one of the things they talk about is groceries. Don't buy, you know, a lot of times you'll buy groceries and then you eat two of the seven bananas, and then the rest go in the trash, or, you know, if you had my mom, you got banana bread. But reduction, you do that first. Reuse, we all do that. You go to Goodwill, that's reuse. Processing the waste, the recycling composting, I just talked about that. And then recovery, energy from waste. We have some clients on the East Coast where tipping fees are more expensive, I'll talk about that. In other words, putting in a landfill can cost eighty or a hundred bucks a ton. Out there, incinerators make sense to burn waste and create energy. And then finally, the least preferred is landfilling your residuals. I want to emphasize, there are no mandates issued by the United States government or Texas. The EPA's got a goal of thirty-five percent for diversion. So again, there's nothing that requires in Texas that you do it, but a lot of folks do it, you know. So one of the things I will mention, there has been an increased awareness of the markets that, for finished product, that count on recycling. And again, I'm not going to get into a big discussion on it, but we'll talk about China. One of the things that the legislature actually promoted was there was an education about all the businesses that rely on recycled product to make their final product. Quick example, carpeting. All the backing, when you lay down that carpeting, virtually all that's made from recycled water bottles, soda bottles. There is, depending where you are, there are certain glass processors that cannot get enough recycled glass. So they're actually trying to get more glass. So there's a market, it creates a lot of jobs. So it's something the legislature actually discussed in the last session. We're very pro-business on it. Bottom line on this graph, and all I'm going to focus on, this shows the total amount of waste that's generated. All I'm focusing on is the top purple part, that's the recycling piece. And if you look, in nineteen sixty, it started very little, then it starts to grow, and then by nineteen ninety, it's got a nice spread. But you notice it kind of, it keeps the same spread. It's about thirty-four percent, and we've kind of plateaued there. Bottom line, recycling, once you get to about thirty-four, thirty-five percent, you know, that's doing the big box stores diverting their cardboard and all that. It's you taking out your newspapers and water bottles and all that and putting it in recycling. But after you hit about a third, it gets harder to do that. Now you have to start going after harder to recycle material, materials, and that gets more costly. Here are just some of the recycling rates for some of the other cities around the state. I will mention, sometimes there gets debate about how accurate they're measuring and whether they're being generous or what have you. So you have that discussion. Okay, what's driving the volatility with regard to the markets for recyclables? Bottom line, China, back in twenty seventeen, notified the World Trade Organization, and this was the start of the Green Fence, and then they created the National Sword. I don't know how they come up with their names, but that's what they come up with. The first one was Green Fence, where they just wanted to prevent recyclables coming in to China. And then part of the National Sword was when they put the contamination rate down to about half a percent. Just real quick to give you an idea, the U.S. exported thirty-seven million tons of recyclables in twenty sixteen. That has gone down significantly. And to give you an idea, China, if you go back about five years ago, they were taking in about twenty-five million tons of cardboard and mixed paper from all over the world to make, you know, the cardboard boxes, they ship DVD back to your TV or whatever. They are now down, this year they're going to only take five million tons, okay? So that twenty million tons of cardboard, mixed paper that's being generated around the world has to find a new market, okay? So just how it works, there's, when China did this, they were, the reason they started this, when we were sending materials over, they might have a ten percent contamination rate in, you know, the big shipping containers and the bales that were sent in those. Give you an idea, if we're sending over twenty million tons of material and there's a ten percent contamination rate, that's two million tons of garbage they've got to get rid of. So they take the ninety percent, use it, and then they got two million tons of garbage to get rid of. So that's what drove this. As a result, there's an increased awareness, we have to do a better job diverting, so not having contamination in the recyclables we set out, and also generating less waste. So it has created that interest, and we've got to do a better job of putting out recyclables and not throwing diapers or garden hoses in with your recyclables, which happens all the time in communities I deal with. Now, you've got this twenty million tons of cardboard and mixed paper that now are not going to China. Where are they going? Mills, for instance, are responding in the United States, and they're starting to ramp up and build mills to take those materials. Wisconsin, for instance, you know, you used to think there, that's where all paper, paper mills are everywhere. They haven't built a new paper mill in Wisconsin in thirty years. They're building one that's going to take about four hundred thousand tons of recycled content, mixed paper, old cardboard, to make tissues and things like that. They realize this is a long-term trend, and so they're putting over a billion dollars into build paper mill right there. There are other examples around the country as well. Bottom line on the side, when China did what they did, it impacted the market. You had all of this supply of recycled content with nowhere to go. Supply and demand drove prices down, and also lower revenue from the sale of those recyclables now. And this just shows the volatility. You can see in oh nine, OCC is old corrugated containers, mixed paper. You can see in oh nine, they really dipped with the recession. They went up, but they've been plateauing down. They, you know, OCC, I'll just hit that one as an example. They peaked in two thousand and eleven at about a hundred and fifty dollars a ton, and earlier, well, this goes through September of twenty nineteen, but into twenty twenty, they were around twenty to thirty dollars a ton, so. And these are just some examples of the prices. So that's, that's why prices are down. So let's talk about Weatherford's current program. What do you do? You have a voluntary curbside recycling program. Your current fee is three fifty per month, which was recommended in our cost of service analysis, going to five fifty per month per household for those that have the program by twenty twenty-three. Your materials are then hauled to the Republic Murph, where you pay approximately thirty-five dollars per ton for a processing fee, which is a good processing fee, I will tell you, and we'll talk about that in a second. You currently don't have a recycling drop-off center or a commercial recycling program offered by the city, although I wouldn't tell you if you went behind any big box stores like a Walmart or someone like that, they'll have a compactor there where they're taking all their cardboard, and they're doing that because that's part of their sustainability plan. So what are the different options for recycling? You have a single-family residential program. Bottom line, you have a curbside subscription-based program. Other options are to have a drop-off recycling center. We have some clients your size, they either do curbside recycling or they have a drop-off center. I'm working with the Still, City of Stillwater, Oklahoma. They're about forty thousand in population. It's a college town, so very, you know, pro-recycling and that. They have a curbside program and a drop-off. Then you go to Bartlesville, Oklahoma, about the same size, they have one drop-off center for their citizens. There's not a right or wrong to it, it's just what level of recycling do you want to offer in your community? So those are just a couple examples. Bottom line, one of the things, and I'm just going to focus here, is the cost. Bottom line, a drop-off recycling program where you have a collection center, a lot of times when you look at that cost of a manned site and then hauling those materials, in this case to Tulsa for processing at a Murph, the cost of those programs can be twenty cents to a dollar per month per household, you know, pretty affordable. Curbside recycling, you can be three to six dollars per month per household, much higher level. You know, you've got equipment, collection trucks, people, it costs more. So, and then just the one other thing, recycling rates tend to be lower with the drop-off recycling, zero to ten percent. Curbside recycling can be higher because it's convenient. Multifamily, you can do onsite with carts, or you can have offsite. Bottom line, both those programs work, but you can tend to have higher contamination at an apartment site if you have those, because again, no one does, people don't see what people are putting in. The trash bins may be full, they put their trash in the recycling, you have more of a transient population, you have to constantly re-educate them. Quite frankly, having recycling programs for multifamily, it's challenging. And then finally, commercial recycling. Again, we see a lot of the big box stores will have their own programs. We do have some clients that will offer a program where they pick up dumpsters, or they'll work with the entertainment district and pick up bottles and, you know, from the bars and things. But those programs all cost money in a down market. Just emphasize, public outreach is critical, whatever you do. Don't reinvent the wheel, and I'm not responsible for the cartoon. Our marketing person, I think she was getting bored putting the PowerPoint together or helping me with the graphics. I told her to get me good graphics, so anyhow. But the key is, don't reinvent the wheel. There is a lot of good marketing information out there, cities will share, so if you do anything, use that. Use your cog. This is an example of something they've done. So cost effectiveness of recycling compared to disposal. One of the reasons that recycling has challenges right now is, bottom line, you look in the red, tipping fees in Texas, that's the South Central, it's around thirty-six, thirty-five dollars a ton. Your landfill is even less than that, that you haul to, you have a good deal there. But, you know, if you go, say, to the, get up to the Northeast, you can see there are like sixty-seven dollars and eighty or ninety, and there are other ones. I've worked in Washington State's, Nahomish County, their tipping fees over a hundred dollars a ton, because they have to actually rail haul their trash down to Oregon to a landfill. So that's a hundred dollars. You've got a landfill down the street. So if your tipping fee is down under thirty dollars, a lot of the clients we look at, what is the processing cost where you take your recyclables to the Murph? Up in the top right corner, this is just from a survey that was done on average processing fees, and they're around sixty-three dollars a ton. That is the cost when you take your recyclables to the Republic Murph. Now, they only charge you thirty-five dollars, which is a good deal. A lot of these folks are sixty dollars, and I want to emphasize in that purple box, I'm working with clients in New Mexico that are playing, paying over a hundred dollars. The Friedman Murph in Albuquerque, you have to pay a hundred and twenty dollars per ton to drop your recyclables there. Their landfill there is about fifty dollars. So again, I'm all for recycling, but you're making the conscious decision then to pay seventy dollars more to recycle per ton. HHW, you have a current program in place for citizens, it's a voucher program. They can come down and get a voucher, costs about fifty dollars. The program works well. I will say, if you ever look at something else, some folks do permanent drop-off centers, but those cost a fair amount of money, because you have to have a structure, and then it's got to be blast tolerant and all that, and you have to have training, and it's a higher level of effort. And then some have curbside collection. What we see the most of are temporary drop- What we see the most of are temporary drop-off community HHW events, but you still have to have the people trained, and the most expensive cost is the disposal, because you just don't take that to a landfill. It has to be boxed, tested, and that's expensive. So bottom line, you have a program. This was really fast, but bottom line, here are the recommendations then. Bottom line, we just recommend you stay with your current subscription program for curbside recycling, at least until we see the markets settle down a little bit. You are offering recycling for citizens that want it, so it is available. I would only pursue a recycling drop-off center if that is something you really want to look at, but that's an additional cost. You have a current HHW program. The only thing that we'd recommend is if you wanted to potentially consider doing a collection event, that is something you could consider. But again, those take money, time, training, so we're not saying you should do that, but if you're like saying, oh, we want to do a little bit more, that's something you could look at. And then finally, if you did that, look to the cog. They may, they sometimes provide funding on those things, and, but not for the disposal, because that's the expensive part. And I think I lied, I went 17 minutes, I'm sorry.
Very informative though, sir. Any questions for Mr. Yonkey? We really appreciate you making the trip out here, and thank you so much for your presentation, sir. Item 10 on the agenda is future agenda items, council, anything? Mr. O'Toole? Item 11 is citizen comments on non-agenda items. Anybody from the floor? Hearing none, we'll go to item 12, which is adjournment. Motion for adjournment by Kevin Cleveland, second by Matt Tiscus. We'll take a vote on that when you're prepared. Indicate yea or nay, please. Council is adjourned at 7:20, 5 to 0. Thanks for your service.